Good evening and welcome to the October 11, 2016, meeting of the Town of Scarborough Planning Board. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Karen, can you please take the roll?
Ms. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Beely?
Ms. Ogless?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. Mazur? Mr. McGee?
Here.
Thank you, and let the record show that we do have a couple of absences and a vacant seat. We do have a quorum, and all will be voting members. Next item is approval of minutes from the September 19, 2016, regular planning board meeting, as well as the special planning board meeting that was held on September 26, 2016.
I move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
You have a second, any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to say how impressed I am with the quality of our minutes.
You're here. Hopefully that makes it into the minutes, too.
Yeah.
Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. First action item, number four, is John and Stephanie Haddad request a subdivision amendment for Lot 34 of Windward Heights subdivision, 42 Woodspell Road, Assessors Map U48, Lot 2434. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mrs. Chair. This applicant is before the board for an after-the-fact request to amend the previously approved no-disturbed buffer that was established on Lot 34 of the Windward Heights subdivision, also identified as 42 Woodspell Road. The original no-disturbed buffer was established as part of their DEP stormwater permit for the overall Windward Heights subdivision. That no-disturbed buffer is sort of above and beyond the town's standard requirements, and so the applicant's been working through the DEP amended stormwater permit process, and we have received a copy of that amended permit, so we do have that on file. So with that, as I said, the applicant's seeking to reduce their, the no-disturbed buffer that was on their property that has been encroached upon by the, mostly-built pool at this point. So with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay. And I'll turn over to the applicant, if there's anything you'd like to add.
Sure, I'll give a brief overview. My name's Tom Farmer, landscape architect, and I was called in June or so to come out, I was called by the land, or the pool construction company to come out and see if they were within the building setback limits. They had a feeling that something just wasn't right. When the Haddads bought the property several years ago, they were kind of sold through the realtor that, you know, it was already cleared to the existing tree line, which is down here, and their property line is here. So they actually thought that this was the original buffer. And the buffer, the DEP imposed buffer should have been here, pretty close to the house. And then the setback, the building envelope, was here. And a pool is considered a structure in Scarborough, so it's, it needs to be within the building envelope and obviously outside of the buffer. But the pool was already, the hole was dug, the pool was constructed, the concrete pool itself, but then there was a stop until we figured it out. I feel bad for these, for all the clients I've ever had. I feel the worst for these because of the summer we've had. It's been, they've been looking at this hole since June. It was, I think they were hoping it was, would be done by July 4th, but it's just the permitting process through the DEP and through the town, and because it was a subdivision, that's why I'm here, that we, you know, I have to come back and get it amended and re-signed by the board and then re-recorded with the Registry of Deeds. So we were able to, as Jay said, get the DEP to approve the new buffer with some mitigation of planting within the building envelope, and we reduced the building envelope to 15 feet off of the property line, which is required in the ordinance. So everything meets, luckily, it was built in such a way where it worked out just barely, but it seems to, everything seems to fit now with this amendment. I think that's really about all I have to offer. The plant, they want to start the planting as soon as possible and keep going on the pool, and hopefully it'll be a Christmas present.
All right, thank you. Before we move to board discussion, would we have the opportunity for public comment on this, if there's anyone who would like to come on up? Seeing none, we'll turn to the board, and Nick, would you like to start up? Do you have anything on this?
I don't have anything to add to this.
Susan?
I have nothing.
Robin?
Are the landowners here?
They are not.
What, what can we, what can be done to ensure that the no-disturbed buffer infringement doesn't happen? Again, just sort of like a lesson's learned sort of type thing, Tom, if you wouldn't mind?
Yeah.
Letting us know in your professional opinion, because I'm aware that, you know, probably just about every, you know, the majority of subdivisions approved have these no-disturbed buffers. So how do we connect those dots?
Yeah, that's a great question, and it would really come down to enforcement, and that enforcement would have been a DEP enforcement, and they're stretched so thin at the state level that, you know, and their subdivisions approved all over that have these stormwater buffers, and unfortunately, ironically, it was the developer that cleared the buffer.
Right, right, so it was recorded on the plat or the book indeed, or whatever, and this new buffer is also going to be recorded?
That's right.
Okay.
And the homeowners now know about it. I mean, it was, it was an absolute honest.
And probably others in the subdivision probably know about it, too, maybe?
Yeah, well...
I guess that's what I'm trying to get at, is, you know, is this a case study that's worth, like, letting other communities know that, before you go dig in a pool, maybe, go see the town office?
Well, they did. They had a plan designed by a landscape company, which completely overlooked the ordinance and any of those regulations. And they pulled a permit for the pool.
Okay.
There's lots of caveats
Yep.
in that permit, on that permit, that say the owners are, the owners or contractors are responsible for gaining any state and local approvals for those types of things, or meeting local ordinance standards. If the pool, you know, the pool is considered a structure, only this much of it, that little seat shape up there is, would have been legally allowed.
Right, right. So was there any mitigation rate that was applied here because the no-disturbed buffer was, was in fact disturbed? Did DEP apply any mitigation rate, meaning you need to renew the buffer, like, two to one versus what it was, or anything like that, Tom?
What happened with that, the stormwater regulations have changed in the last 10 years, and they actually got more lenient. So they lost just about 18 feet. The buffer should have been here, that no-cut buffer line, and now it's here. So there's a loss of about 18 feet, but it, Sebago Technics were the engineers originally on the subdivision. They took a new look at it. We met with the DEP out there, and they said you can, you can apply the new stormwater regulations now instead of the old ones.
That doesn't happen often.
We've gotten lucky all along the process, especially where they, where they put it. I mean, they could have, they could have easily put it outside of their property because they had no idea where that was.
All right.
They thought their property was down closer to the stream, which is still about another 100 feet away, so there's still a good, over 100 feet of buffer to the, to the stream.
And you do have the DEP findings and approval letter in hand?
Yes.
And that's been presented to staff?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we were on the agenda for last month's meeting, but didn't have it.
That's all I have, Chair. Mr. Chair?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I'll just add, just to very briefly, to get back on that conversation, that it really is, it really is the responsibility of owners to make sure that they, that they affirmatively look to see what restrictions there might be, and it's all available there, and we do see this sort of thing from time to time. I'm glad that it was, were able to make it compliant and get it permitted, because if that hadn't been possible, then it really would have gotten uncomfortable. So I'm glad that it's, seems to be having a happy ending, but, you know, to me, the big lesson learned, and lesson sort of reiterated, is if you're an owner or a builder or whatever, affirmatively go down to town hall or wherever and look to see what buffers, easements, restrictions there are, and don't just assume that because nobody's knocking on your door that there isn't anything there, so.
And hire a landscape architect.
Right.
Right on.
So, I will leave it at that and put forward a motion. I move to approve the application of John and Stephanie Haddad for an amendment to the Windward Heights subdivision to modify the no-disturbed setback on Lot 34 as shown on the proposed plan prepared by Sebago Technics dated September 19, 2016, and further described in the materials submitted by Tom Farmer dated August 30 and September 26, 2016.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous, thank you. All right. Our next item, Main Veterinary Medical Center requests site plan amendment for 1500 Technology Way, Assessors Map U39, Lot 4730. Jay?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, the applicant is before you for a site plan amendment to previously approved commercial property in the Enterprise Business Park. This is at the end of Technology Way, and it is in the Highgus Parkway zoning district. What the applicant is seeking before the board is for the placement of what our ordinance calls a nontemporary use of an accessory storage container. Essentially, they want to put an MRI trailer that is an accessory use to the veterinary clinic or hospital on site. And then they're also seeking approval for a parking lot expansion. It's a slight modification from a parking lot area that was originally approved by the board but not required to be built, so they're looking to do some minor modifications to what was originally approved. As noted in staff comments, this application is required to go through our site plan review ordinance requirements, as well as the performance standards for the, what I'll call a permanent accessory container, rather than the language our zoning ordinance uses, which is long and complicated. Anyway, one of the, so in staff comments, one of the, the performance standards for the trailers, required trailers to be 495 square feet or less, and we just want to confirm that that is indeed the case. There was a little bit of ambiguity as to the dimensions of the trailer, so we just wanted hopefully be able to clarify that. Staff also identified that the performance standards in the zoning ordinance and the site plan ordinance also seek to ensure that trailers or accessory, accessory buildings are well-screened and mimic, at least to the best of their ability, and coordinate with the overall architectural vernacular of the site, so, you know, are there any ways of looking at that? And then in terms of the parking lot expansion, staff had comments with regards to overall landscaping, lighting, and some questions regarding the grading for consideration. And with that, I would turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay, and I will hand it off to the applicant's representative.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Steve Bushy with Stand Tech here on behalf of Main Veterinary Medical Center and Dr. Potoff, Alan Potoff, who is responsible for the application, and we assisted him to a certain extent. Our office, going back a number of years ago, had prepared the original Lot 30 park plan. In fact, I think Angela may have been involved with it at that time when she worked with Dulugah Hoffman Associates. So Dr. Potoff approached me, said he needed to have a mobile MRI unit. He was originally contemplating putting in a brand-new MRI unit, and due to expense and so forth, inside the building, with what he was going to have to go through for renovations to the building, decided that perhaps a mobile unit was more feasible for him to look at. So he did that, and I'm going to show you some pictures of the MRI unit, because I think that will be helpful in addressing a few of the staff comments. The location of the unit here is the existing building, is at the very end of Technology Way, pretty well secluded, so to speak, pretty well landscaped, established landscape. I think the construction of the facility was 2006, 2007, '08, no later than 2008, so it's been there for a fairly long period of time. Basic parking lot out in this area here, access on this side of the building. Have a little garden area of sorts over on this side, piece of mechanical equipment sits outside the building, and there are a couple of exit doors here and here on the building, which works out well relative to operations and people having access in and out of this MRI unit, which I'll show you some photographs here in a moment. But positioning the MRI unit was done principally because of that access piece here, and what we're planning on doing, since it is a trailer, it would be positioned on a concrete pad area, and there would be good access from a door here for being able to step out, then step up a set of stairs, detachable stairs that go on to the trailer unit, and then you step into the, into the unit itself. I'll show you some photographs that, for example, give you how a larger animal, let's say a horse, would be brought into the, into the trailer to have an MRI taken on a leg, apparently, or something like that, so I've got some images to that effect. At the same time, Dr. Potoff, as we were doing this, he said, you know, while I'm going in for this approval, I might as well take the time now to do an expansion of my parking lot, because they're a busy business. I was out there a couple of times now in the last month, just for, you know, lunchtime hour even, and their parking lot's not 100% full, but at least 80 or 85%. And so he's got a good business going there, and felt compelled to move forward now with the parking expansion. Jay touched upon the fact that the original approvals did have a parking lot expansion, which is basically this area here that had been previously shown. The parking count would go from, I think it's 56 today, up to 78 was the original approval amount, and we're looking now for basically 74 spaces. We reconfigured this expansion space slightly from what the original approval was, but it's basically still within the footprint area of that original site plan. We're looking at an access that would allow vehicles to circle around, got an extension of a sidewalk here into the parking lot area, and to the points of drainage and grading for city, town staff. We may have to do a few refinements there, but I think those are pretty minor items that we can correct or fix as to the drainage. Basically, the site, being part of the business park, drains into the business park systems, and if you get back at the entrance of Technology Way, there's a fairly sizable stormwater management facility there. So we'll show you how the site fits in to the broader parks. I was just saying, Enterprise Drive and Technology Way, that large pond is right there. So our site's at the very end, here's the existing building, and I apologize, I'm sure the distance here for you to be able to see, but here is the location of the parking lot, and you can see that there will be maintained a reasonable stand of existing mature trees, not only on the project site side, but there is within the Downs property as well, and this plan does show where that property boundary is here. Suppose as comparison, looking at this particular property with its existing parking lot and then the proposed parking lot, then looking at, I don't know what each one of these tenants are, uses are, but with respect to where their building and/or parking lot are here within the Enterprise Park, pretty similar circumstances in terms of how close they got to their property boundary, and yet still retain, I've driven up and down the Downs here, I did that today, just to get a sense of what that, boy, it's, other than through here, where the emergency connection is, which is gated, right now, the leaves are still up, it's still pretty thick, and you can't see much into the Enterprise site, and I believe that that'll be the same type of situation here, even when the new parking lot's installed, so. So these are images, don't know exactly the unit that is being proposed. There are multiple vendors out there, so I downloaded these off of the internet, and they seem, based on the information that Dr. Potoff had provided me as to how these trailers set up with stairs and access, in particular, this one was very close to the unit that, the information that he'd given me. I don't know what vendor who produces this is, but it looked very good in terms of the details that he'd given me, so I thought that was positive. And as I had outlined earlier, here's a photograph as an example of, you know, a large animal being brought into that MRI unit. So basically, this will be backed into that space adjacent to the building, the truck goes away, it sets up, and there he is now, so he can offer, this is Dr. Potoff, the applicant, so he might be able to offer a little bit more information and background, either correct me or tell me differently here as to the unit that's going in, but I think that this hopefully is helpful in terms of understanding what it's going to look like. Back to that piece for a moment of location. So here is the west side of the building, and these trees in here, these cars are basically in front of where that unit will be parked. So it's a pretty high stand of trees now, but it's thick all the way over to the downside. And the purpose for this photograph here is just to give you some indication, the parking lot today has, I believe these are LED-type fixtures for lighting, and I would expect there probably to be two more within the parking lot area. Here is an image from the Downs driveway, looking back into the site, so you can't even see the existing building, back into the site there, 100, 150 feet. So, back to the site plan again, so that mobile unit sitting here, seemed like it was, one, convenient to the building, because they do need a fairly high electrical service, and that will be coming out this side of the building, but as far as I understand, there are no other utilities that go into the building other than the power piece. And again, it is a unit that, the folks who are using that unit are really, their office spaces inside the prime building, they step in and out into the MRI unit, as best I can tell. So with that, I would entertain any questions, and/or perhaps Dr. Potoff can offer anymore about the project.
Thank you. Susan?
I'm just curious, having seen the photos, how do you get a horse in there? No, you've got to go to the podium.
Go on up to the mic there, please. Thank you.
I can't imagine how you do that, from what I've just seen.
That, that would not be our facility.
Oh, okay.
Our facility is pet.
Yours is pet, so you're not going to have horses there?
No.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. I mean, the whole setup makes sense to me, but then there was like
That could be true for Cora.
these stairs and a horse, I couldn't quite see that. Okay, thank you. I really think it's fine, I thank you for your...
Robin?
Yeah.
So Jay, you had mentioned that we need to ensure that the trailer, that whatever trailer is less than 495 square feet?
Correct, that's a, that's a zoning standard that the board doesn't have any... These trailers are 48 feet by 8 feet.
Forty-eight by eight? So, okay, and how do we, you know, and we have to make sure that they're well-screened or mimic the background around them?
The site, the site plan, the performance and the site plan standards, yeah, they call for them to be screened from budding properties and roadways.
Okay.
So that's...
Got it. So the trailer being there with the rest of the building, kind of a thing, is appropriate? Okay.
So, yes, really the question that staff have for the board to really consider is what it's, because we didn't have the information about what that existing standard trees was, I certainly had an idea, but it's up to the board to determine if that's adequate or not, so I wanted to be sure that that was at least looked at and thought about.
Sounds good, and then the lighting, are these cutoff lighting fixtures that are there?
Yes, those LEDs are new fixtures.
Okay. That meet, that meet the town ordinance requirement? I'm done. Other questions?
I'm sorry, I forgot.
Thanks, Robin.
I did make a note about the question that staff had about considering the feasibility of putting an apron around the base of the trailer to minimize the view of the wheels, et cetera. I mean, it's going to be in the back of the building, am I right?
That's correct. That is correct, and it is the furthest lot from that Technology Way, so in order to see it, you'd have to come into our parking lot, go towards the back, and then look over it, and then you could spot it. Anywhere else, I don't think it's visible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
Is it, is it your intention to, this is permanent, essentially, correct? You're not going to actually down the road, put the MRI machine back in your facility?
I am leaving that open to a, to a degree, in the sense that we currently do have an MRI that is within this area right here, it's a room that has an MRI. It's a, it's called a permanent magnet, so it doesn't have the liquid helium cooling it, it's smaller in size, and when we looked at feasibility for swapping out that unit for a 1.5 Tesla machine, Wright Ryan, their first pass-through came back with an estimate of about $400,000 to upgrade that room, which seemed crazy to me, that it, so we're, and plus, there is going to be like two months of downtime, so we'd have to get rid of the one unit, and then they would do the construction, and then put in another unit. And this way, if we do do that down the road, it's, it can be seamless in the sense that we could be using the trailer while they're doing construction, and then once that unit's in, move the trailer out. And so that's, it's unlikely I'm going to go that route, but it, that is still an option. I'm not going to take apart the MRI room that we currently have, except to move the current machine out and probably turn it into a surgery room temporarily, or permanently.
So the reason I was asking was, and I don't necessarily have a strong feeling one way or the other on this, but the... one way or the other on this, but the longer it's there, the more I lean towards having to do some sort of shading of the bottom, whether it's through an apron or maybe a couple shrubs or something. If it's, if it's a more permanent fixture, I think you've, you gotta make an effort to help it blend in to your surroundings a little. So that, that's the way I would lean on that. I, like I said, though, I don't really have a very strong opinion on it, one way or the other, given its location on the, on the lot. So other than that, I really don't have other questions. I just think the board should consider the length that this might be in position.
Thanks, Nick. Will this, will this trailer have any of its own restroom facilities or other kind of waste disposal facilities, or is it?
No.
It's just, all of that would be in the main building?
Yeah, there's no restrooms in these things.
Okay.
It has an equipment room, the operator's room, and then the MRI room itself. And that's, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Yeah, I generally agree with my, my fellow board members on this. I don't have any major concerns, given the, given the location there at the end of the road and the sort of the positioning of it and the, it's truly an appropriate accessory use there. I agree with Mr. McGee that, you know, I guess I would strongly encourage you to consider doing some additional screening, whether it's a little bit of landscaping or whatever it is, if this does turn out to be more of sort of a permanent setup, so to speak. But beyond that, I don't really have any strong feelings on it. Susan, did you have something?
We did not touch on number seven from our staff comments about the stormwater narrative. It states that the impervious surfaces on the site will be collected and discharged. So in other words, is there going to be any impact? Is that essentially what this says? Going to be any impact to the stormwater management of the fact that you're taking up this space for this instrument as opposed to just leaving that impervious surface as it is? Yes?
I think you can speak to your business, Steve.
I had responded or provided information in the original application about the percentages for both landscaping and impervious relative to what was originally approved for the business park and what was on the site. So with what's been constructed to date, we're not even 50% of what was originally approved. And there will be an increase now with this parking, but that had been factored in on the original approvals. We're still below probably by 80% of what the original approvals were for this lot development as part of the business park.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Glad we were able to confirm that. Do you have something, Jay?
Yes. Just for point of clarification and, you know, should the board start thinking about utilizing the draft motion staff as prepared? Just ask the board to sort of think about what we tried to do or what I tried to do in drafting the memo is just lay out sort of the, the items that were raised in staff comments, not knowing what the answers would be and how, what the board's satisfaction would be. So if screening of the trailer isn't a significant issue, you might think about scratching that item. Then I guess same with sort of architectural detailing. I hear the board sort of asking for some tip-of-the-hat type stuff, but maybe not necessarily acquiring it, or maybe so. But just thinking about how you want to position the condition to help provide direction should we get there tonight. I guess the other item I'd like to hear a little bit more discussion around is staff had identified the, trying to understand what some of the details around the islands and the parking fields were going to be. Will those be sort of landscaped islands? Are they going to be just pavement, asphalt, what, what the intention is? And if we could just sort of understand what the applicant's expectation are. If the board's satisfied with that, that's fine, or again, helping to position the applicant moving forward.
Thanks, Jay. Yeah, I think, I think it would be worth hearing from the applicant on the, the potential for landscaping in the expanded parking field. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Back to the images here. So this area here is the center island in the parking lot here. So you can get a sense of, they planted a lot of landscaping when the project was originally constructed, and it has done very well. A lot of good-looking trees and so forth around the perimeter. Now this area in here where the MRI is going, they had planted a bunch of trees and shrubs and so forth, and those are going to have to get displaced. And what we had talked about was the idea that some of that would go on the outside perimeter here because it's plant material that you get salvaged reasonably enough and use it, at least along these edges. Not that it does a whole heck of a lot, given the intensity and depth of existing trees that are there, but rather than waste it, we talked about the idea of replanting it. Now to the staff's concern, I think, which is the two, these two islands, they are somewhat narrow. And frankly, I had not put anything in these islands in terms of landscaping pieces, but it wouldn't seem to me that it would be a big stretch to be able to put in perhaps a couple of the shrubs and plantings that they're going to be taking out of this zone and bringing those into those two areas. As I said earlier, the, this landscaped island here is that. It's got a lot of nice trees, heavy vegetation. I think they've done a really good job all around the site, particularly in the, in the front. If you come down Technology Way, you're looking at this building and you're really looking at a bunch of mature maples and deciduous trees. And they've got some evergreens planted here over on this side. There's a couple of nice big pine trees. This is a very large tree that was saved in this little island area. So, you know, felt fairly comfortable that at the end of the day, they're going to do what's right relative to the plant material that's out there because they've done such a good job with it to date, so.
Susan?
As the landscape lady on the board, I didn't ask that question because I went out and looked, and there is really wonderful landscaping there. And this is going to go behind and invisible to anything that already exists. So I don't really have any questions about needing any additional landscaping. Just my opinion, that's all.
Thanks, Susan.
So the material that's getting displaced will be transplanted along the corner of the parking lot there. So, and what I'm hearing too is that some of that transplanted material will also make its way into the earthen islands in the parking lot. So will it be, it'll be curbed and, and I'm sorry, I put the plan set away already. So it'll be curbed and inside there will be soil that will also have some of the transplanted material from putting the trailer in there. How, does anybody else want to talk about the landscaping before I move on and ask questions about the architectural detailing or the screening of the trailer?
No?
So how do you propose to screen the trailer then? Or what, what would you do if, if, you know, like, like Jay had said, we're hearing that like at least some tip of the hat if it is going to be a permanent structure. What, what do you have in mind? Have you thought at all, have you brainstormed at all about this? Because I think staff had maybe made you aware of it, Steve? Okay. So had you had any conversations about what might be possibilities?
Not in any great detail. We have a number of, I don't know if you have driven up there, you'll, you'll see that we have some banners, a banner hanging from the front of the building. It's a vinyl. I could see taking some of those along that trailer. We have used different characters in the advertising and I can, creating some banners that could.
Or a mural art contest in the school. Just saying. No. I guess I was just, so you're not thinking about necessarily like lattice or earthen berms or landscaping or shrubs or anything like that? So you're thinking about signs to somehow screen sort of like the advertisement for what is the MRI company kind of a thing? That's what you're thinking?
Yeah. And then as far as the lower part, I was starting to look online to see what they have for security for, for large, and we hadn't come up with anything yet that is, trying to search that out.
Yeah. Jay, what is the, do you have the, do you happen to have the ordinance right there?
I certainly can, yes.
So are you referring to the site plan regulations or the performance standards?
When you talked about the, it being well-screened and mimic the surroundings.
Yep. So let's see. Let's see. So this is from the performance standards in the zoning ordinance. It talks about all accessory storage containers shall be screened by the use of fencing, walls, berms, plantings, natural vegetation, or other buildings and structures on the lot so that the accessory storage containers are substantially hidden from budding properties in public way.
Okay. So if, Steve, could you pull that, that, yeah, that one up again there? Yes, please. And so there's, there's no, there's no plans to necessarily have reroute traffic to go into Downs Road. Do you see what I'm saying? So, so basically, when a car pulls down into your driveway, they're going to see your beautiful landscaping, like Susan said, and they're hardly going to see the trailer at all. But what I'm saying is if, say Scarborough Downs gets developed or something like that and it accesses suddenly from the other end, that road gets extended, will it be visible? Okay.
This is the existing buffer area that will, will be there, and that's going to extend some, I'm going to guess about 80 feet. Pretty heavy.
And is that, and that buffer has covenants or some type of deed restriction on it too, Steve, so that we don't have?
On the downside, I couldn't say anything to what's on there.
Okay. I'm all set.
Thank you. Yeah, I think those are, those are definitely questions worth asking. I guess where I come down on it is that, as you were sort of leading to just now, Robin, as, as the site's configured and as things are oriented now and what's being proposed and thinking about what Jay just read, there's really no direct exposure to a butters or a public way per se. And I think it's good to be thinking about future potential connections, but, you know, we can't really hold the applicant right now to something that might happen down the road, literally and figuratively. So I don't know that I'm hearing sort of collectively from the board that folks feel that this rises to the level of a, you know, a specific concrete condition in terms of additional detailing or screening. Obviously, feel free to speak up if anyone disagrees. So just sort of looking at the, this draft motion, I think it's, I think it makes sense to, I would suggest we strike the, the section that talks about architectural detailing. Leave in the parking lot landscaping since we, that has been a discussion. It sounds like the applicant is already kind of moving in that direction of sort of relocating some of those, some of that vegetation to the periphery of the site as well as to the islands. And with, you know, screening, screening should certainly be in there. So I guess to me, just the language around architectural detailing would, would not be relevant or applicable here.
I think that seems appropriate, too.
Okay.
Just in terms of sort of the screening, is, is there anything additional the board would like to see done in terms of screening? If not, I think you could take out the screening of the trailer from the condition as well because what they've proposed, it's already part and parcel of the application.
Sure.
So that existing landscaping, its location, so I'm not hearing anything from the board.
Yeah, Jay, I think I'd just like to add that, you know, because it is a mobile trailer, that is assuming that the mobile trailer stays in the place as proposed. It's not moved.
Correct. So.
Is that implicit in, for, for an accessory?
It is. So, so again, the reason why this is before you are, again, it's called a, what's the terminology? The non-temporary use of an accessory storage container. Essentially, any of these trailers that are going to be located any more than, I think it's either 30 or 60 days, I can look it up, is required to go through a site plan approval. And yes, it's essentially an accessory building at that point.
Okay.
I would like to just point out that if you go to the post office and you exit going north and you go around the back of whatever that building is that does MRIs, they have a pad there upon which they put a temporary MRI. And they put in some shrubs. And it was inadequate, but, you know, it was an attempt to buffer. And then they took it away and never came back. In the meantime, we got a pad and a buffer for nothing. So I'm not sure which is better. I mean, it's sort of like, this is the back of a building in an incredibly beautiful area. It's, no one's going to see it. The parking area is already buffered. There's all kinds of landscaping. I just don't see that there's any kind of a problem.
I agree. Thank you. So with that, I move to approve the application of Maine Veterinary Medical Center for a site plan amendment to the property located at 1500 Technology Way. The site plan amendment, as shown on the plan prepared by Stantec dated September 20th, 2016, and further described in the application materials, enables the addition of a permanent accessory storage container for the use of an MRI machine and the expansion of the existing parking field. The application is approved with the condition that the plans are revised to reflect the proposed changes described by the applicant during the deliberation. Plan set and materials are to be revised to address all comments in staff's memo, including parking lot landscaping, lighting, grading, and detailing. Final review and approval of materials may be completed by planning department staff.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? That's you on this. Thank you. Good luck to the board. Item number six. Matthew Chamberlain requests final subdivision approval for 216 Pine Point Road, assessors Matthew 25, Lot 3. Jay?
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As noted, this is applications before you for final review. That means this application had been before you. It was back in the spring that the applicant received preliminary subdivision review in which a lot of the major issues and design criteria were considered. Just for way of background, this is a residential subdivision within the R2 district with direct access off of Pine Point Road. Staff has provided comments, notably some detailing around the, the work that will be done within the Pine Point right of way that we want to be sure are done adequately and appropriately. And outside of that, staff has prepared a draft motion for the board to consider, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks, Jay. And I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Hi, Matthew Chamberlain. Going through the staff notes that Jay's provided, we weren't able to create a new plan to bring tonight just from technical issues that the engineer had. But simply put, the five items noted have all been addressed. The information that engineering has provided, my engineer, has been taken care of. The minor changes to the plan, just a couple of typos, have been resolved. Not, not much to add.
All right. Thank you. And we will turn to the board. Robin, would you like to start off on this one?
Sure. I just have a question on the previous staff comments that were submitted in the package for April 4th, 2016. All of those were already previously addressed with staff as well. There's nothing outstanding, and I just want to confirm with Jay. And I just want to confirm with Jay and Angela, there's nothing outstanding from the previous staff comments either? Everything's addressed?
I'm satisfied. Yeah, we met with engineer Paul Gadbois, too. I met, or talked to him a few times. So I think we got to that point, and then there were just a few left over.
I'm all set. I don't have anything. Thanks. Susan?
I'm a little confused in terms of the mapping, but I think it's just because I haven't been feeling well the past couple of days. But the fact that staff, that Angela doesn't have any questions about this makes me feel a whole lot better. And the staff comments sound as if it's all been noted and approached, delineated. I guess I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Nick?
I'm also.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think I have anything either.
Yes. Good job. We like this.
I don't want to be the weak link here. No, it looks like everything's been addressed, and I appreciate that.
We'll make all the technical changes to expand, create my lot, of course, bring it in for.
Right, and we have obviously confidence in staff to work with you to make sure that all comes together. So we do have a motion here. I move to approve the application of Matthew Chamberlain, plans prepared by Ross Boundary Surveyors and Paul Gadbois under the provisions of the Town and Scarborough zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance for the final subdivision plan of Pine Point Heights subdivision with the following findings and conditions. Findings as stated, I will not read that. The conditions are, number one, prior to the release of the attested final subdivision plan to the applicant for recording at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, the applicant shall A, pay the required traffic impact fee of $1,402; B, provide draft deed language related to the shared driveway for lots 2 and 3 for review by the town; C, provide revised detail plans prepared by Paul Gadbois addressing the comments in staff's memo, final plans to be reviewed by the planning department staff. Number two, prior to the issuance of a building permit for Lot 2 or Lot 3, a detailed site grading plan shall be submitted for the applicable lot, grading plans to be reviewed and approved by the town engineer. And the final condition, number three, prior to the start of work within the Pine Point Road right-of-way, the applicant is to secure a road opening permit from the Department of Public Works.
Yep.
That's the motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commercial Place LLC requests a site inventory and analysis phase for Enterprise Drive, assessor's map U-39, Lot 47-1 through 36. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you just noted, the applicant is before you as, really, this is the first step in a plan development review process for a mixed-use development within the Higginson Parkway District. The applicant is seeking to amend the previously approved Enterprise Business Park by introducing residential uses into a, as of yet undeveloped phase of the development. So the reason this is going before a plan development review process is that introduction of the residential use. That the Higginson Parkway does allow residential activity, provided, as I already stated, is part of a plan development review process. Just by way of overview, the plan development review process is a three-step process that's sort of taken sequentially, so this applicant will be before you multiple times. This is that first step. First step is a site inventory analysis, opportunity to really take a look at the natural, cultural, natural and cultural characteristics of the site as well as the existing built environment. To try to see what areas are appropriate for development, which areas should be identified for preservation and the like. Then the next step will be the development of a master plan, which is the conceptual plan that shows sort of the development pattern. And then we get into the very specific subdivision and/or site plan process. So again, taking a step back, we're only at the site inventory phase tonight. One of the interesting things about this project, as I noted, this, the property in question is part of the previously approved commercial subdivision, the Enterprise Business Park, that went through a lot of these sort of review processes back in the early 2000s, going through its initial subdivision review process. As part of that, one of the early conversations staff had with the applicant is, one of the requirements is that as part of site inventory and application, they have IF&amp;W and Main Historic Preservation provide comments at this step. The applicant is working through those processes as we understand it right now, but sort of wants to start the ball moving. Staff felt that that seemed like a reasonable approach, given that those reviews had occurred about 10, 13, 14, 15 years ago. But we did set the understanding that we will require those to be submitted prior to or as part of the master plan phase. So we will at least get revised comments from those outfits. And if anything comes up from that, then we may have to reconsider what happened. But it seems reasonable to move forward in that light, and so hopefully the board agrees with staff's assessment on that. So again, in terms of the site inventory analysis plan, it's really taking a look at those natural and cultural areas that are features on the property. And staff comments, you know, again, get, understand the history of the property, just a couple of items to note is the existing stream that goes through the Enterprise Business Park and any considerations thereof. And then again, just a few small wetland fingers that might be associated with great, bigger wetland features that might be identified for preservation. Those are really the sort of main elements we identify as part of site inventory. Our staff comments went to a number of other items that have really become more master plan items, but we thought are at least worth starting the discussion around or having part of the public record in terms of interconnections with other properties. I think we had just another project or another parcel in this development in how it butts the Scarborough Downs, and any potential redevelopment of that large parcel should be strongly considered. So I guess with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay. Where we go?
And I will welcome anyone from the applicant's team that would like to come up and take a free presentation, sort of an overview of the site inventory here.
I've been part of Commercial Place LLC and the Enterprise Business Park for many, many years as we have worked to try to build out the park. As you may know, it's, if you look at the lots, you know, permitting, it's permitted for 36 lots. It naturally divides into two pieces. And we are, you know, when we hit 2009, we sort of hit a wall. We haven't had really any development in the park, hardly any since then. We did build nine buildings on one side, and there are 17 lots on that side. So in the last five or so years, we haven't built any. So we got to, just to give you a little background, I mean, we got to thinking about what we were going to do. It's taking a long time to build it out. It was losing maybe momentum. We weren't, there was no activity in terms of new building. And so we got to thinking about what we might do to continue the process of developing it out. And we sort of hired Bolus to look at, the Bolus Company, to look at the market, and came to the multifamily, the need for multifamily. In fact, the Bolus number was a demand for 5,000 units in the greater Portland area. And as we all know, rents have been rising and so on. So we, when we built the park, it's a high-quality park. It's, it's suburban park, so it's green, environmentally friendly. We have some running trails, walking trails, some park benches. We have the stream through there. And it's really a beautiful place to work. And in the, in keeping with that, we wanted to try to keep something like that moving forward as we would enter another phase. It has a natural road that will cross the stream that's approved. And we, in looking at the issue, the economic issue as much as anything else, came to this solution, if you like, of a multifamily development. But to do it, the scale at which it will be required to make it sort of economic in terms of the cost of development, when we did our study with C.B. Richard Ellis, we figured it was bigger really than certainly something I wanted to do. And so we reached out to look for qualified partners, capable partners, people with experience, people who've done multifamily, people who had a high reputation and had the financial ability to deliver it. And we have a partner in the Newman Development Corporation. I think there may be some information that may have been submitted on Newman. And their work is first-class and will deliver quality projects. So, you know, we worked hard over a lot of years to make this a really nice park and want to continue, obviously, to deliver something in that, in that way. So, you know, for us all, so and for the people who occupy buildings, who made the investment there, including, by the way, the town and the business owners and the other property owners, we wanted to make sure that we build out the park, that we fulfill the potential that we sort of started out to try to do. And so we feel that with the market demand the way it is today, with the need for more housing, that we feel that we've come up with a pretty, really excellent solution. So the, the planning that has gone into it meets all of the compliance in terms of the permitting that has already been done by the DEP originally for the project. And our, our plan, as we envisaged, complies with all existing zoning and regulations, no requirement for variations in regard to that. And the next step for us would be this master plan. So, you know, one of the things we, that I will mention that we looked at in the beginning was, was the tax benefit of the town. We, when we originally permitted this, we originally got this project, we had a TIF, a tax income credit enhancement plan for the park. And in keeping with that, we had a goal really at the time to build out a tax base of, I think it was $50 million. And clearly, with the lack of, you know, with the market the way it is, we've fallen short in current build-out of what we have. But this multifamily alone would add a $60 million valuation to the, to the base. And sort of, you know, we see it as a way to sort of see the vision and put us back on track. And I think the units, there's a lot of one-bedroom units and two-bedroom units, and we believe it will have a, if you like, a smaller impact on services, schools, fire, and so forth as, as we, as we work to build it out. So with that, if there are, I don't know what the procedure here is, if there are technical questions or if there are any questions, maybe we'll take those. I have Jason Viafides? Baffiades? With me from Stantec, who provided the information that you're looking at. And also Blaine Buck, who's been from Cordia Capital Partners, who's been helping us with this project here this evening.
Okay. If you, I guess the way I'd prefer to proceed, which is what we've generally done on these, is if you have something you've prepared that, that you, something else you've prepared that you'd like to walk us through, we'll go ahead and hear all that at once, and then we'll sort of take questions all together. But if that's, if that's all sort of the introduction.
We're at the site inventory phase, not really at the master planning.
Right.
We could give you some more detail, but we're working through it if you wanted some more. I think this will show you the project the way it's, the way it's phased.
Excuse me. Could you just put that up there so we can all see it?
Yeah, we certainly don't need to get into the weeds, and it is a multi-step process. So I don't think you need to get into a lot more detail right now.
This is the commercial side, and this will be the multifamily side.
Okay.
And the stream divides into, and the trail goes around both sides of the stream.
Okay.
So I don't think we have much more to do, do we, on that? What else would be my address?
You just come up and introduce yourself and be happy to hear from you.
Sure. My name is Blaine Buck from Capital, Cordia Capital Partners Group. So what we can offer is we've been working for the last four months with Newman Development, which is a developer from Mid-Atlantic who has produced a number of successful residential developments. And we have a plan that we could share with you if you wished for us to share with you where the development, this sort of the thought process we were looking at. We would appreciate any feedback or guidance that we may get from. I think, I say, it's fairly difficult to sort of, sort of get to the point where, you know, this is the, this is the west side, this is the east side, this is the, it's all permitted for commercial, but we're looking essentially up on these lots up here. So if you'd like, we could present that drawing also.
I think just a very brief overview of that would be, would be helpful, sure.
Sure, just swing the mic around.
There's a handheld mic as well. And on the bottom, you'll need to turn it on, on the microphone.
So all of our TV viewers can.
Yeah, right. We all learn this all the time.
All right. Thank you.
So this gives you a sort of general indication. This is the lower, you know, part of the existing commercial subdivision that's been approved and built out. Essentially, these drives here have been built out and there's a number of structures that have been constructed. This upper piece here is part of the 36, 36 lot subdivision. So the intent would be to continue to instruct the infrastructure pursuant to the regulatory permits for DEP, the owner of course, of the town, with a couple slight, slight improvements. Because this whole stack actually came all the way to this point, we'd like to take and bring it back. And the reason is, is because, and we were chatting with Jay and Dan, and because the lot was permitted in 2002 and '03, we thought it made sense to actually go back and look at the wetlands again. And so we sent the original wetland and signed the show, and we found that the small fingers of wetlands actually appear now. So we have taken this a little bit further with the site analysis phase into the master planning phase and tried to look at a little bit of minimization. The developer would like to, would like to construct clubhouse down at this end, if you will, much like most residential development. And then they have, they have taken and spread out on the site 10, 10 buildings. And the buildings each have 33, 33 units in them. So there'd be 330 residential apartment units with a mix of one-bedroom and two-bedroom units throughout the, throughout the site that would be phased through construction over a period of time. That's just about the high, above the high level we probably want to.
Okay. That's definitely. Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have the opportunity for public comment on this, understanding again that this is really just the very first step in a multi-step process. We're, we're starting at sort of a high general level here, but if anyone does have anything they'd like to come up and share, this is an opportunity for that. Seeing none, we'll go to the board. And Nick, do you have anything?
Yes. Jay, I'm going to ask you to help my memory here. When I was reading through the materials, and I failed to print them all out, was this the one that had a couple of lots that were, had some of the parcels had been touching the wetlands, or the wetlands had come onto the parcels? Is this a great project I'm picking up?
Yep, there's a couple of wetland fingers on the backsides of lots 7 and 15.
All right. 7 and 15.
And again, staff recognizes that, you know, sort of we're at the bubble diagram stage, and these are pretty small areas, but just sort of noting that, you know, as and if we move into the master plan development phase, that maybe these are areas that get a little more attention.
And I'm sure you've probably had the conversation in the past, the board has attempted to do its best to keep wetland pieces off of private property. And I think that's going forward. Take note of that. And we certainly understand there are always exceptions, but as a rule of thumb, it's not a bad practice. The other question I had related to this very old letter.
How old is that letter? How old is that letter?
2003.
Whoa, it is old.
It is old. And I'm just curious, they, it's from the Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife, and they had recommended, I don't think they required, but they probably strongly urged 100-foot undisturbed buffer along any side of the streams. And I'm wondering if your new information regarding the wetlands might, this might have an impact, and I know you're going to go back through the process and discuss this with them, but any thoughts as to what may or may not change from what we've seen here from the 13 years that have gone by?
Yeah, thanks Nick. Good point. Jason Baffietis, Stantec. We do, so the thing with the stream setbacks is typically MDIFW asks for 100 feet, and I think DEP's typical rule is 75 feet. When you get the site law, MDIFW has the ability to ask for that extra 100 feet. I think in the master plan phase, we'll certainly look at that again and see, you know, where it makes sense. Certainly we do it. There might be a situation where we give it in a whole lot of the area and then we might have to come in a little bit, but that's all, that's all stuff that'll be kind of ironed out as we go along to the next phase.
Outside of that, I don't have a lot of comments at this point. Thank you.
Thanks Nick. Susan?
This is the easiest part of this process. From here on, it gets more and more complicated. But I would like to just, because we're on camera, to go through just a few of the issues that were brought up by staff at this point, which is the site inventory and analysis. It is interesting to take, to make note of the fact that because we're changing the use of this overall plan, the write-in and write-out access under Route 1 is something that needs to be taken a look at. I'm sure that you know that and we know that, but let's go public with it. You just mentioned the difference between the 75 and the 100 foot. I'm a little confused, and I don't need to have it explained to me because I know it will be explained to me in time, but this concept that the anticipated development of the commercial lots proposed was 20,000, and then in July it turned to 26,250, and in September it turns to 26,800. And that's important because the amount of the development that's going to be business, if you will, or commercial, will dictate how much residential you get to have. So that's something that you know we're going to be looking at really closely, and you don't have to answer me, I'm just saying that this is something that is, to me, is really large. What was the other one I had here? Oh, I'm a little confused myself. If you're not confused, you're a lot better informed than I am. But when preparing the master, number five, when preparing the master plan submission, you need to include responses addressing the applicable additional development standards contained within the Higginson Parkway district provisions. Hello, staff.
Hi.
What does that mean?
In the Higginson, in the zoning ordinance, the Higginson Parkway district, for projects that are going through the plan development process, there are design standards they need to meet.
Okay.
And so what this is asking is for the applicant to basically provide a narrative that points to the board and staff how they're addressing them. It makes a much more efficient review process, we find, for board members.
Okay.
So you can sort of say, okay, we're being asked for street scapeing. What are they doing?
There you go.
We're being asked for design standards. How are we doing it?
I was hoping, I hope you were going to say that because that was the one piece that wasn't addressed clearly in here, is what do we have for design standards and what do we have for street standards and what do we have for sidewalk standards and all that kind of stuff? Because this was not part of the initial acceptance of this property, and it looks like it's been taken care of. I mean, it's been requested of you in a way that's in the ordinance, and that makes me feel a whole lot better. I think that basically, I'm, let me just say, I'm excited about this concept. I really am. I have not been worried about you as people, but I've been worried about the project because it's such a great spot and the plan was great, but times change. And if there's anything we need, it's multifamily housing in Scarborough. And this is an opportunity to provide that, and I'm really very excited about that, and I think we can work well with you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
Thanks, Susan. Robin?
I guess I want to start with wetlands and talk about, I'm happy to hear that they were reassessed or reevaluated after, you know, 12 or 13 years had passed, kind of thing. In that time, we've also had some very, some very controversial rules around significant vernal pools that have come about. Have those been assessed? If not, let's put it on the table and talk about that. Because here we are at the mouth of Scarborough Marsh, and if any community is going to have some, or any place is going to have some, let's be on the lookout and look for it now so that we don't have to be, you know, worrying about it later. With that said, you know, I'm the person who always goes to the rule and says, how are you maintaining the natural buffer areas the most? So I'll be very much interested in how you're maintaining those natural buffer areas, including whether it's stream setbacks or wetland setbacks, or using a forest as a stormwater treatment system. Because this is all still pretty densely forested here, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That, a densely, you know, a densely forested area has a certain amount of absorption potential. So when we take away those forests, there's going to be a lot of ponded water. So I think we need to think about that really, really carefully. And speaking of such, how, can you talk to me a little bit about how and why the roadway is laid out the way it is? If you could just give me some insight into your rationale?
Sure. Well, at this point, we're still sort of hovering above the site at sort of 1,000 feet. This road is actually an existing right-of-way that was, that we sort of inherited from the previous approval. So, and the road was actually laid out sort of, the design engineer who did this, I think was Joe LaVereire, back years ago. And it actually, you know, we got it spot on. So you want to balance your cuts and fills, and you try to cross wetlands and avoid wetlands in areas where it makes the most sense to do so. We're probably going to keep that alignment just because I think it's been tested out by a number of different engineers and developers as we sort of looked at this. But, you know, the size, you know, we'll discuss, you know, how wide does it have to be? We'll work with fire chief and all that stuff. So I think sort of what you're seeing here is probably going to be close, I hope, to the final product, but there's always room for variations and changes.
Okay. Well, do we have an idea of what the timeline will be as far as when you'd like to see tenants moving in? Or, you know, you'd like to break ground? Do we have any idea as to the timing of sequencing?
I'll have to turn that one over.
Okay, sure.
So Blaine Buck, Cordia Capital Projects Group. So, once we, once we go through the planning process and the approval process, we'd like to, we'd like to think we could be somewhere around second quarter, breaking ground the end of second quarter.
Calendar year?
2017.
Okay.
And this would be phased, most likely. Once again, this is a very collaborative process because we're working with Newman Development, which is another entity. So during the master planning process, they have to be, they have to be part of this, and they'll be here also to, you know, to sort of explain that.
Okay. So you're looking at permitting very soon?
Yes.
Wow. So who on your team, and it sounds like you have a very great collaborative team, who on your team can really speak to low-impact development, making sure that as you remove those trees and the water's going to want a pond, how are you treating that immediately at the source? And not, or are you, are you fully relying on the existing permitted central drainage system? Can you tell by my tone where I'm leading you? Am I leading?
With the tone it says.
So sort of, sort of yes and yes. We're actually, we've identified that, we're working through that now. We're not prepared, you know, to actually answer that fully, but we have decided to, if you will, burn down existing, you know, stormwater treatment systems and look at new technologies for those. Yeah. I mean, this is sort of a little bit older technology back in 2000, 2003.
Yeah.
So that's the first thing we look at.
Yeah. We've come a long way. We know a lot, a lot, how to do it better.
Right.
Than it was probably permitted in 2003. So that's where I'm going to lean on you, is to show us how you've taken all that we know in the last 13 years and really put it to work both aesthetically, but also, I think, you know, engineering-wise, let's make it, you know, a really, you know, great place to be, kind of thing.
I think you'll find that because this is a residential development and how these are set up in pods, if you will, so they're sort of individual neighborhoods.
Yeah.
You want to maintain as much of the forest canopy environment around there. So that's our, that's our goal, you know, to do that. Otherwise, the project gets lessened.
Nice, nice. Who, are you incorporating any green streets or complete streets? Or is this, oh, is this not required in this zoning area? Jay, are complete streets or green streets sort of on the table here?
I would, I would think the expectation would be for, and I imagine I'd have to go back and look, but the original approval had sidewalks on the streets, and given the residential component that's being brought in, we might want to really look at ensuring we're having sidewalks on both sides of the streets, potential for esplanade. So I would think, you know, in terms, in those type of, I think that'd be the context we'd be thinking in.
Okay.
And in terms of streets, I did just want to mention, one of the things as we think about future development of the project, is really critically thinking about the interconnection of this parcel with the surrounding parcels.
Right.
We think that's a critical element. We did note in our, in our staff comments that there was, as part of the original approval, a right-of-way left to property towards the, I'll say the top of the page as we're looking at it here. But in the subsequent years, that property has come forward, and we know that that's essentially just a very large wetland and probably not the greatest connection to be made. So hopeful that as part of that master plan process, the applicant at that 1,000-foot level is able to take a look at those surrounding properties and understand the natural conditions that are around. Where are sort of those upland pockets?
Yes.
If not all contiguous upland, at least island hopping.
Yeah.
That can be done. So I did, I want to just take this opportunity to jump in there.
You took the words right out of my mouth because I think it's really important in an area like this, especially so close to Scarborough Marsh and, you know, sort of the center of town, it's important that we do, to honor the natural, both the natural hydrology but also the natural resources in general there. I wish you all well and encourage you to reach out to staff often and early.
We have.
To ensure, glad to hear it, to ensure great communication and a great project. Thank you.
Thanks. So definitely some good, good comments to this point, and it sounds like you're off to a strong start in terms of thinking about the right things, being proactive on the wetlands. That's great to hear, obviously working with staff. And, you know, I'm excited about this concept. I think it could really, in addition to really sort of pick-starting and sort of filling out that, that area and that project, if you will, any opportunity to bring more sort of residential to that, that part of town and to the town in general, this type of housing is, is great. So, all that said, just to briefly recap, given that we are talking about site inventory analysis here, you know, we've touched on what appear to be the key kind of elements here, which are the, you know, the wetland fingers, potential for vernal pools as mentioned. We've got Willidale Brook that runs through, and so there's that to continue to keep in mind. There was reference in the staff comments to sort of taking stock of the built environment, which I think sometimes I thought was a very good point because sometimes we think about site inventory and analysis in terms of, rightfully so, in terms of the natural environment and what the topography is, what sort of water features there may be. But in this type of context, I think it is very important to make sure that we have a good handle on the existing built environment, on that contiguous part of the project where the commercial has been built out so that as staff notes, there's sort of a useful baseline from which we can, can move forward in looking at the rest of this buildout here. So that's something that, as was suggested in the, in the staff memo, would be something to look at as part of the master plan phase, as will be, obviously, will be a lot of questions and a lot of focus on traffic, traffic patterns, circulation internally and externally onto and off of Route 1 as well. The, we mentioned Willidale Brook, and we need to sort of look at the setbacks from that, continue to look at that. And as staff just mentioned, the interconnectivity, that's obviously, that really gets to the heart of master planning. So we'll look forward to seeing more on that. But again, it's an exciting, promising concept, and it sounds like you're off to a good start, and hopefully we've given you helpful feedback, and it's good to take this first step.
Thank you. Sure. Just out of curiosity, have you considered the impact that residential development would have on the commercial lots you haven't built out yet and the types of businesses you may be attracting instead of what you were hoping to attract originally?
Yeah. So one of the, one of the items, one of the, one of the great things about going residential next to this is actually how it does affect the commercial aspect and for growth retention. And David's mentioned discussing this through Bulas, because we want, we want more information on that, we want more metrics on that, and how that, how that generates additional, you know, additional commercial space and activity.
Yeah, I'd figure it expands the opportunities for what you could attract down there. And I think you probably have to pay a little bit of consideration to the type of infrastructure you'll be offering as well, if you're hoping to draw residential across the imaginary phase border here.
Thanks.
Thanks, Nick. I think we're done for now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Forward to seeing more.
Mr. Chairman, may I adjust the board, please? My name is Sean Frank of Sabago Technics. I'm here on behalf of Dunston Properties LLC. Mr. Chamberlain, the managing member, is unavoidably getting called out. He's hoping to get back in time. I understand you have one more agenda item after a particular item. I didn't know if there was any chance, again, at the view of the board, if there's any chance, maybe we could switch those, allow that group to go first, and hopefully that will allow my client the opportunity to get back in time to talk to the board. Thank you.
Is the other applicant here? I don't see any issue with that. And if Mr. Chamberlain is not here when we're done, then we'll have to reassess at that point?
And again, we'll certainly do our best, but obviously, as you know, he's had a lot of, I apologize for the impact on the folks here. But as you know, he's obviously been very involved in this process, and again, he certainly apologizes to the board. He certainly is hoping to get back here before the end of the meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Thanks for letting us know. So-
I think she just went to the restroom.
We want a motion to modify the agenda?
So, I will move that we modify the agenda so that we take as our next item, item number nine, Crest Motel LLC.
Second.
Wait a second. We don't have a, we don't have a court.
I think for administrative action, we can, we can deal with it as a three board member, and then we'll wait for Ms. August to-
Done that in the past.
Be present for the actual business or the actionable items, so to speak.
You made a motion, he seconded it.
Well, I think then we determine that, given that it's- Well, I think then we determine that, given that it's really a...
Treat it like an absentee.
Yep.
Or an absentee.
Yeah, treat her as an absentee.
Still the majority of the quorum, three votes.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion to take up next item.
Yes.
Crest Motel.
Second it.
Second discussion.
I guess I'm wondering, has, I'm wondering of the, there's an immense amount of staff comments on that project. Are we even really prepared to talk about it tonight?
Well, I, my intent in introducing that item, and I know Jay is on the same wavelength as well, would be that we would make it very clear that we were going to keep that as brief and concise as possible and not have it be an open-ended discussion, given that there are a lot of open items on that.
Yeah.
So it's sort of our prerogative on that.
Okay. Given that, I'm fine moving forward with the revision to the agenda.
A motion and a second on that.
So we have a motion and a second for taking Crest Motel as our next item, all in favor? All right, that's unanimous. Thank you. So, all that said, item number nine, Crest Motel LLC requests final subdivision approval for 11 Willowdale Road, assessors map U-39, lot 41. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This application is before the board for subdivision of property located at 11 Willowdale. The site is in the R4 district, also has stream protection and shoreline overlay districts on it as well. Proposal seeks approval for development of five dwelling units on an existing lot, where there's an existing single-family residence, and they're looking to add two duplex units. Board members will probably recall this item as it was before you and received preliminary approval in September. So much of the design elements and sort of heavy lifting is typically done at the preliminary approval process, and there were certainly some cleanup items that still needed to be addressed. Based on the applicant's resubmission from prior staff comments and board comments, staff is generally comfortable with what's proposed. We do have a few comments for the board that remain outstanding, but we believe they're fairly easy to be addressed by the applicant moving forward. So we have prepared a draft motion for the board to consider if you are so inclined this evening. For that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay. Does the applicant have anything to add?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Bill Thompson with BH2M Engineers, and as Jay indicated, we were back here in September, and one of my partners here, I wasn't able to make it. But we're in here tonight, Paul Russo, the applicant, under the Crest Motel LLC. As Jay indicated, we have five units, two duplexes, and then the one existing building, which will be converted to a residential. At the last meeting, I had comments from the board, staff comments that came in from Jay, and town engineer, peer review, and my submission, September 27th, touched on those. We also, between the two meetings, we received approval from the sanitary district for the sewer connections. So my cover letter, September 27th, went down through, the board had asked clarification in the net residential acreage calculations, which are on Sheet 1. Identify and label the stream protection district. Proposed stormwater improvements. We had a, the first attempt was to use a level spreader. We've gone to a grass underdrain system, which was recommended, and that's been approved by the town engineer. We had some notes to Sheet 1, revised, they asked for clarification on parking out here, signs at the end of the gravel for fire lanes, no parking, those have been added. And trimming, there's some existing vegetation out here on Willowdale Road, and everyone waited on that to be trimmed up at a height of about 10 feet, so we have better site distance out there. We also had a few comments from the town engineer, again, mostly on the grass underdrain filter system, making sure it met the stormwater requirements of the site, which it does. Erosion control notes, been added and updated to make sure they reflect the latest edition. And comments from Woodard and Curran, there were four that were addressed from the September 14th memo from them, and again, that just talked about the stormwater flow path and the underdrain filter, again, which was asked for and commented by multiple departments. Our most recent submission was October 7th, and that is a response and a reflection of comments from Woodard and Curran, which was one comment, and three comments from Jay. So the staff comments talked about the light fixture out at Willowdale. It will be a CMP fixture, but it's a responsibility of the homeowners association to maintain that and pay any fees associated with that, and it will be a full cutoff fixture to meet the requirements. We had a note on Sheet 3 indicating the exterior slope of the underdrain filter will be two to one, which all that information shows on Plan Sheet 3. And we added a cleanout at the end of the underdrain manifold on the vegetated soil filter, and again, that's shown and labeled on Sheet 3. Woodard and Curran had one comment in their memo, and again, that was about the timer concentration with the stormwater coming from the site getting to the treatment field, and that has been adjusted. It was adjusted a slight amount, and on 25-year storm, there was a slight increase on post-development. That has been looked at by Angela and also by Jay's department. So with that, I believe we've responded to, like I said, the last planning board meeting, staff comments. We did go out and verify the stream location that was asked of us, and that has maintained where it was shown in the original approval. And we also had Mark Hampton go out and redelineate the wetlands, which had not changed. So those numbers all came back as they had in our 2010 approval. If you remember, this was approved in 2008 and in 10, for this building out here to be commercial, and then we had a commercial building approved and obviously not built, given that there was no demand for it. So we're here requesting a final approval for these five residential units. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan, do you have anything on this?
No, I think that the questions I had were answered by the latest presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin?
Did Mark, you said it was Mark Hampton who did the wetlands. Was it in his scope to look for significant vernal pools?
Yes, yes. That was looked at back in 2008 and 2010.
It wasn't rechecked?
It was, yes. Part of his evaluation of the wetlands.
In 2016?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. So you mentioned that there is a slight increase to the post-development flow?
Correct. About 2% increase.
What type of CFS does that translate to?
Let me pull that letter out. Believe it was, well, let me not believe, let me give you the exact numbers. The pre-development on a 25-year storm was 2.86 CFS, cubic feet per second, and it went up to 2.93. And again, a discharge point here, this land is all undeveloped, and we're about 115 feet before we get to any resource, so with that...
Is that land, is that your property?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The grades all come down through here. The wetlands are back here.
Yep. Is it developable property?
No. This is the maximum development that this piece could support.
Angela, is there a provision to allow an increase in post-development flow?
I believe it just talks about, well, we'd look at erosion or impacts to abutting properties or impacts below that. What you're talking about is 0.07 CFS. I think they did a lot to come down, and that's where we talked about adding the LID feature. That actually detains the flow through there, and that's why I was a little more particular, I think, on the downstream side of that. That was one of my, one of my last comments, was how they are protecting that slope, sticking out of that.
Ah, the three to one, yep, okay.
The underdrain filter.
So do you feel like the cleanout manifold addresses that?
And that was another thing of talking about, more about the maintenance of this and upkeep of that, and making that as simple as possible. Those, yeah, all kind of played into that, is ensuring that this will get maintained and that that will be stable below.
Okay. Who'll be conducting the post-construction inspections of the cleanout manifold and doing the maintenance? Who'll be doing that?
It'll be assigned to the owner presently, Paul Russo, and then when the units are sold and developed, there'll be a condominium association for maintenance and management.
And is, does the town require that those executed contracts be submitted for post-construction, you know, MS4, MCM5?
This site does not trigger Chapter 419 for post-construction.
Okay.
Annual reporting. One of the things, I think, and maybe Jay can speak to this, that we require the PE on record to certify when it's installed and it's designed, that it was built as designed.
Yes.
So we kind of get just that, the initial. Beyond that, and if they don't trigger that threshold, they don't, aren't required to do the annual reporting.
Then there's no recertification processes required either, like there is for DEP? No?
Not in our...
Okay. And you said that the lighting will meet the existing cutoff standards?
Correct. In ordinance.
And I don't have anything else?
Thanks, Robin.
Yep.
Thanks. I don't think I have anything either. Appreciate you walking us through how the staff remaining staff comments have been addressed, and I think everything's in order, so I will put a motion forward. I move to approve the application of Crest Motel LLC, plans prepared by BH2M Engineers under the provisions of the Town of Scarborough zoning ordinance and subdivision ordinance for the final subdivision plan of the Willowdale Common Subdivision with the following findings and conditions. Findings as stated herein. Conditions, number one, prior to the release of the attested final subdivision plan to the applicant for recording at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds, the applicant shall, A, pay the required traffic impact fee of $2,500; B, revise the plan details to address the comments in staff's memo, final plans to be reviewed by the planning department staff; and number two, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall record the declaration of unified ownership document at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds. That's the motion.
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, we will come back to item number eight. Dunston Properties LLC requests subdivision and site plan review for Route 1 and Stewart Drive, assessors map U-30, lots 16 and 17. Jay?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chair. So let's see, this discussion tonight is part of the ongoing review regarding the development of the Dunston Village commercial lots in the TVC district. Board members will recall this item's been before you, going back to last summer, summer of 2015, starting with the plan development review process, which laid out sort of a conceptual layout and development pattern for the property. And then more recently, I believe it was just our last meeting there before you, for sketch plan review. This is the first formal application where we really get into the nuts and bolts of the subdivision and site plan review, so this is where really that critical review of the fine-grained elements begin. That being said, there, as you have received staff comments from town engineer, planning staff, peer reviewers, there's a lot of open questions and a lot of details to still be worked out. The applicant has received those comments as well, and we've actually been talking, and we do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning that I was happy to report on, so we'll be going over a number of those in just a few hours. So with that, you know, again, understanding that there are a lot of details and a lot of information that's still needed, you know, this opportunity, this discussion might be a good opportunity to really talk a little bit more about process, try to really understand what the applicant, again, where we have a plan developed, we have the master plan approved that gives us the general concept of what's happening. You know, is there an opportunity to really sort of take certain nuggets or buildings, per se, and start the site plan review process as the overarching subdivision process begins? For example, we know the restaurant is of high priority for the developer, based on our last discussion. So is there a way to draw out that site plan, given that we already have an approved commercial site and an approved roadway, to really begin that process, but understanding that it is ultimately going to fit into a bigger process? And so maybe that's part of the discussion we could have tonight, or some of the groundwork we could lay. Outside of that, I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through everything we have here, because again, I think there's just a lot more questions at this point that we can get to, but it takes time, given the scope and complexity of the project. So with that, I turn it back to you, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, Jay, and being mindful of that, I would just ask the applicant's representative that, you know, given, especially that there will be a meeting tomorrow morning with town staff, that we not necessarily spend our time kind of walking through and digging through each and every item, which is still in the process of being vetted and sussed out with staff, but again, as Jay suggested, sort of focus on sort of the process and start to pick off a couple of sort of high priority items to address this evening. And then we will have the opportunity for public comment, and we can have any board discussion or questions that we have at that point, and with the understanding that, you know, we'll be seeing you again, and we'll be seeing Mr. Chamberlain again, and continuing to work through this kind of methodically. So it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For terms of introduction, I'm Sean Frank. I'm an engineer with Beagle Technics and help over. Mr. Chamberlain, again, I was hopeful that he'll be here before too long. Appreciate everyone's patience, and certainly appreciate staff's cooperation as well. Certainly, we understood a lot of the loose ends and a lot of the details associated with it. We will have, hopefully, everybody in the room together tomorrow so that we can kind of start working out some of the real specific details associated with this. And certainly, at the same time, again, you folks had a look at the master plan, sketch plan, if you will, of the overall thing with the landscape architects and architects last time, that perhaps, again, at least our general thoughts in terms of how we're going to be handling the overall stormwater, the grading of the site, and the utility services to the site, so at least you're at least keen on that. And initially, I know traffic is, well, let me just get started on the overall. And this is the overall Dunston Cross and subdivision that you've all seen numerous times, broad turn road over through here, Route 1 up along this end. What we have are the two commercial lots, if you will, that were associated with funding along Route 1, which then the process we went through in terms of the master plan through the last year and the bench you saw last time, which led to this development plan, if you will. It's basically had a mixed use of a restaurant, office facilities, retail facilities, and apartments and townhouses. What we've taken that, if you will, is to try to take it and at least go to the next step. And again, I know this is the prettiest plan, but to just kind of give an overall concept in terms of what we're looking at, both stormwater, initial grading associated with this, and the overall utility services to the site. So again, this is the proposed intersection Stewart Drive, coming off of Route 1, coming down into the project site, the facilities on either side, the mixed uses on either side associated with that. The intersection itself has obviously been something we've been studying great a bit, working with DOT, having conversations with the peer review engineer for the traffic to the town of Scarborough. As Jay mentioned, we were looking at one time, perhaps going with three lanes down through here, with one lane south, one lane north, and a right, left, center, turn lane, to see if that can kind of help with the whole traffic issue through here. We've certainly backed off from that, if you will, at this point in time. So our thoughts on it, we're going to be looking at something probably a little bit simpler at the intersection. Again, we're still in that analysis phase, and obviously, we want to work with staff before we make a formal presentation to the plan anymore. From a grading standpoint, the site generally rises slightly. It's pretty well flat along in through here, rises just a little bit, and then dives down. This is the good-sized gravel pit, if you will, that they maybe started excavating back in the day when they did the work with the turn lane. Our intent here is this could come up at about a 1%, so one foot and 100, to a high spot, basically right within the island of the right-of-way, and then down to 1% and then steepen it off back, way back down into the pump station, if you will, back to where we had the original design. In association with that, we'd be filling in... In association with that, we'd be filling in the gravel pit that's been excavated quite a bit, basically 15 to 20 feet in some areas. You may recall the idea of that, of as part of the master plan for the overall Dunston Crossing, I mean, this would be a recreational field, but more of a general, more of a grass field where you could go and picnic and throw a frisbee or those types of things, on a real formal athletic field. So we actually have some good fill associated with it down through there. From a source standpoint, we have a branded gravity system. We could examine in Stewart Drive, as well as within a service manholes throughout the site, down to a proposed pump station down in this location here. This pump station was part of the original design associated with the Dunston Crossing subdivision. The intent of this is basically to pick up everything that's in the commercial development, as well as all of the other, all of the other residential development within the Dunston Crossing subdivision. So basically, this whole pond from here, obviously from the district's standpoint, you know, they'll have it appropriately sized, so they can just increase the size of the pumps in case of any other future development that might be going to tie into that. This pump will pump up to the gravity system within Phase 1 of the Dunston Crossing, which goes down to the pump station that had been previously installed along Broad Turn Road. It is the intent of that pump station will be public and turned over to the district at the end of the day. Water is relatively straightforward, if that's ever such a thing. We're actually giving a proposed progress line down with the Stewart Drive, the water district down west, going to increase up to 16, just from capacity, and to make sure everything works out from their standpoint. Within that, we'll just have individual services to the building. Each of the buildings will be sprinkled and fed domestically. This side, because of the private nature associated with it, we'll actually have a meter pit for the domestic water service to come in and service the individual buildings in one vein, coming in to the outside service of sprinkles. From the stormwater management standpoint, as I discussed, it comes up a little bit first, and then dives back down as well as we're coming through here. We have had many discussions with DEP, including the biologists, in terms of how we handle the stormwater management associated with this. We are proposing to pick up the individual roofs. The soils up through here are quite pervious, the water goes, works its way down through the soils relatively quickly. So to pick up the roof water, which is generally much cleaner than the parking lots, and to repercolate that to the degree possible down into the soil, to kind of recharge the minor act of the remainder of the site, which we have been a standard stories, series of catch basins, and some special stone drain pipes. We have two wet corners proposed, one in this area, one in this area down through here, basically generally accepting approximately half of the site, as well as a proportion of Stewart Drive, and whatever else feature development had previously been developed or proposed in association with the Dunston Crossing. So again, Mr. Chairman, I do appreciate that, you know, we have a lot of detail to work out through here. We certainly appreciate the time of staff to kind of work our way through there. We are working with DEP, we are working DOT, the Portland Water District, the Scarborough Sanitist Dairy District, so there are a lot of players that are involved in this, that we try to, you know, obviously bring everything to fruition. And again, what we didn't want to do is just kind of come to you folks and say, boom, here it is all at once. I appreciate Jay just in terms of being able to come in and, you know, here's our thoughts regarding this aspect of it. We certainly understand that we'll have a much firmer grasp on traffic in the next point. As Jay mentioned, obviously, from a standpoint of what we have is everything's based on business, as you can imagine. We have a restaurant that is interested, so that probably would be priority one from the applicant's standpoint. And again, I was hoping he could speak in that a little bit more, but we'll certainly work with staff a little bit perhaps tomorrow as well, in terms of, you know, maybe identifying the specific use that we want to, we want everything to work from an overall standpoint, but obviously from a timing perspective, there's some things that we want to have happen quite quickly versus obviously we have more time with other aspects of it. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation, certainly on behalf, and answer any questions that the board has. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Before we do go to board discussion, we do have the opportunity, as I mentioned, for a public comment here. And I will add that, you know, given the scale of this and the fact that we are, I think it is good to have sort of an interim kind of check-in and at least a brief conversation about it as we work through this. You know, we, I would expect that we'll offer additional opportunity for public input as well as we move forward, given again, the scale of this and that we're sort of working through it piece by piece. So with that, I'd welcome anyone who would like to come on up to just introduce themselves, give their name and address, and try to keep your comments to five minutes or less.
My name's Marty McSissou, I'm here with my wife Susan. I am in Abada. I live at 697 US Route 1. I apologize for that earliest comment of I have a guy working my lobster pound right now. I promised I'd be home. I'm not. Anyway, that's okay. Anyway, I am not opposed.
Could you grab the handheld mic?
You can grab the handheld mic, too. Thank you.
See this here? Can you see this smile? I am so happy that this is going in. Ten years ago, Elliot and John came to us when Great American Neighborhood was going in, and said, this is what we're going to do, do with this project. Great. Perfect. We know what happened. We're then being delayed and all. And so I have a very big smile, but I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. Uncle Pat walked out, property lot 19, 697, which is the same size as this lot here, which used to be Lot 18, which has disappeared and became Lot 17. So I own 100 by 700, all the way down to here. That used to be all the way down to here. Ten years ago, when we talked to the Chamberlains, and we were concerned about it, because when my uncle died, me before, me and my wife moved into our house, and operated a business that he had been running since 1949, and this was a great uplift for us. So here we are, here they are. They said, don't worry, this is a big project, Great American Neighborhood. We got a natural buffer there, right here. That's fine. Thank you. Fast forward to where we are now. This is a different project from Great American Neighborhood. It is Dunston Property that Elliot's going to run. And I, Elliot came to me a year ago and told me he was going to do this. We've been out very upfront with each other. Get along with him good, and always will. Anyways, so now, I'm glad we have the water girl and the landscape lady and Nick, I hope I can call you Nick, taking up our side here a little bit. This building here, this last two, the one at Enterprise down there, they said they were going to build all those buildings. No one asked how tall those buildings were going to be. And when this was developed, these buildings were only with TVC, two stories. So we were very surprised when we found out that this is going to be three stories. So last week when I came here, I grabbed the leader and went through it, and they just had the best of us. And I tried to figure out, what does a three-story building look like? So I found this, as I was going through it. It's the Higgins Beach Inn, okay? So you can see the Higgins Beach Inn, that's three stories, right? With no roof? So I'm going to move back 10 feet. This is 10 feet. That's 10 feet. That's 20. That's 30. This is what is going to be 10 feet of my property line, right here. Now, it was, it was stated last time, this was an empty canvas, but this is where they're going to put this. Lot back here, which they had controls in the TVC. Don't know why it went away, but it went away. So you see what I mean by that three-story? So elevation, when you, when you're in Dr. Stereo, which is 695, just street level, you come up to my house, it jumps up, probably where this tree is, probably eight feet. You go where the parking lot is, I can stand on the top of that and look in my second-floor window. So there is an elevation here, quite, quite big. It isn't, oh, they're going to go down, it's two feet, this and that. I didn't see any elevation anywhere, so I'm kind of, don't know where that's going. But if there is such an elevation, and they propose to put this building in this close, what is the step time? Are my kids going to fall, my grandchildren going to fall down and break their necks? Also, what kind of vegetation and shrubbery can you put 10 feet of a slope? Also, they say this is very pervious. You got the right word, I hope it is. When we put the pool in back here 30 years ago, because I shipped out, my wife needed, had to stay home and keep the kids home while we were in the business, it was clay. This is clay here, under here. So say what they want, that's clay, this is close. My father lives here, in this little house here, in the summer, I was in Florida in the winter. I'm on set there. My reach field is right here. There's a, my reach field is, and because it's bottom, it was a business, they made me build a big one, so it's almost like 80 feet long that I had to build. I call it the monument. They can bury me there when I die, I hope. Costs so much money. Anyways, one other thing, he said he's going to, and I'm not going against him, because I want this project to go, so I'm not saying anything against him, I just, for something for you guys to think about. Oh, this is going to be a pond. Well, I walk back here all the time, my kids had motorbikes, and they were in here, I cross-country skied this thing, I'm so glad it's going through. But back here, in the stream, Philip Brooke is back here. So just some things to think about. And like I say, I'm on set there, that's my reach field, and I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Oh, come on. Of course you do. I just want to elaborate that, how important this is for me. I've been there 33 years. Now, you know, it's our piece of the world, if you know what I mean. So now it's a big change for me, because I'm going to be looking up, as I've always just looked out at trees and greens and whatnot, and yes, I do live on Route 1, but that was the beauty. I love Route 1, and then I'd go out back and I'd have all this empty space. So yes, I had it for 33 years, and I'm happy about that. Now I have grandchildren, they also love to go out, and I'm just concerned really with the pool. I have three granddaughters, and I really don't want all these eyeballs looking down at them in their little bathing suits. Once fourteen, she's big, but you know what I mean. So, and I'm glad that you do love landscaping, because that would be so important if someone go in, if somebody would just look out for us to make sure that it is, you know, landscaped. So we do have some privacy as we are used to. And I think that's about it, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Could you please state your name, just for the record?
Sue McSissou.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No, it's great.
There'll be more opportunities.
You did very well. You did very well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Well, we do appreciate that very much. And we'll turn to the board. Susan, would you like to kick us off?
Oh, this is so huge. It's huge. I really appreciate what you had to say. It gives me permission to say, it's all about landscaping, and when we get to talk about what's going to go where, which we're just starting that process, right? We're not at any point of decision-making yet. I would not have thought of that. I would not have thought of that. So this is the importance of public input. I think it's very important, and thank you for coming and pointing that out to us. There's an awful lot in this that we need to talk about, but I would like to suggest that we not get into it too intensely tonight, because they're going to meet tomorrow morning and probably discuss everything that I think is important. But there were a couple of things that I want to make sure do get discussed. The sidewalk thing seems big and undetermined and unsettled. So how that gets done, I mean, there's a lot of stuff in here about, in staff comments about the sidewalk business. And the islands, the pedestrian islands, I'm very confused about the pedestrian islands. I don't quite understand what it is that they think they're going to install, as opposed to what it is that we expect they're going to install. And this, to me, that's primarily important, only secondary to them not having to look at a high-rise from their side yard. This is supposed to be a neighborhood feel, so let's just make sure that that happens. Landscaping again for the parking, et cetera. I'm not too, I'm not sure where we are with the drive-through thing, because I had, from what I had heard so far, it was, I understood that it was, the building was going to be built with a drive-through, but now the applicant is saying they're not seeking approval for a drive-through, but we need to prepare ourselves for the fact that they may want to in the future? So that's very confusing to me. The net residential calculations, I mean, they're talking a language I don't even begin to understand. It's foreign to me, but I know it's incredibly important. So the net residential calculations are of prime importance, and when you come back next time, I'd like to see maybe two pages, if not five, of undetermined origin. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Susan.
I don't want to make it sound like I'm not excited about this, because I am, we need this. I think that that part of Scarborough will result, we will all benefit from this, and what the Chamberlains do, they do well, and they welcome feedback, so I'm not concerned about it, but I'm not, this is, this is the paperwork for today, on this one issue. So I'm a little overwhelmed. Thank you.
Thank you. Robyn?
I'm going to be real to the point. What's the hurry?
The hurry always comes down when you have a specific user that wants to go in. And in this particular case, it's specifically, right now, it's the restaurant. And of course, it always comes down to, I mean...
Okay, so we'll probably see you in three weeks for final approval?
Well, I can't think, that's the whole point of the conversation, is I think we were trying to come in, because every time I'm in front of this board, they always say, don't come in piecemeal, come in with the whole thing. So I think we've tried to keep coming in with the whole thing, associated with, this is what we see as the full development associated with this. But you're right, in terms of what are the hotspots, or what are the specific things we're going to be looking for. And again, we'll certainly talk to Jay on this and then to staff tomorrow, because again, I certainly don't want to speak to the applicant. But, you know, yeah, there are certainly things from a business standpoint that, once these guys are ready to move, especially from a restaurant, they have a specific time they want to open, and if they can't open that time, okay, well, maybe we'll come back next year and try again.
So is that a yes, we'll see you in three weeks?
Oh, I, we'll be back in three weeks. I'm not saying I'm going to be here for a final three weeks, but I mean, I, I mean, I certainly anticipate that you're going to see us every three weeks for...
A while.
A bit.
Last time you were here, I did pick up on the fact that we needed some type of, that there was at least an eight-foot drop between the restaurant and the neighbors. And we talked, this is the site, Angela, isn't it? And so we talked with Elliot about it, so has, has anything happened to the plan to talk about needing some type of safety fence or something like that between, not that that's the answer to, but, you know, just for safety? And because I think, too, that some of the, along their property here, like either the fence or the building was going to encroach on the setback?
Yes.
Okay. So I am thinking of the right property.
Yeah, right. And I know that the later plan that I have seen now from, again, I have to apologize, because in case, I have a little confusion here, too, because obviously I'm working with four-side architects, and they've been the main focus in terms of the master plan and pulling that particular plan together. But I do know that based upon those last comments, this building, as I recollect, has certainly moved. And again, I don't want to make it sound like it's a great thing, but it's moved about a decade or a month.
Has the issue of the two-to-one slope or some type of safety feature... Has the issue of the two-to-one slope or some type of safety feature been considered?
Specifically addressed, I would say no, so I will certainly take a look at that.
If I could just jump on that, I just wanted to be clear that that was on the other side?
It was.
That was on the other side, and that was the 25-foot? If you remember, there was the 25-foot setback to the residential zone, where the property that the Massisos are in is actually in the same TBC zone. So there isn't the requirement for the 25-foot setback. But certainly this board, through the site plan and subdivision review process, has, you know, buffering standards, screening standards that you can use, you know, as applicable.
Thank you for clarifying. Yep.
Well, and I appreciate that too, 'cause that gives me some credit. But again, just from this building's standpoint, I do know, and that must have been part of the conversation you folks had last night, 'cause I do know that at least the last plan I have seen from them, that they pitch, push that building up closer to the parking lot. But I will take a look at that spot as well.
So talk to me too about, you know, I'm also very interested in low-impact development. What in low-impact development and maintaining of natural features have you incorporated into this, anything yet?
Very little, obviously, in terms of this site here. I mean, obviously, it's the commercial portion of this whole thing, so you're right. I mean, basically, it's gonna be developed almost from side to side. So, I mean, I don't wanna make an awful lot of promises, obviously, in terms of saved vegetation, because on this particular piece of land, again, as you remember, for the overall project, obviously, they have a large swatch, if you will, of forest land that was retained and is open space.
So I'll just echo the fact that I think we need to think about low-impact development, because it brings us to the Phillips Brook issue.
Absolutely. Can I just go on that just a little bit more though, Robin, if you don't mind? Because the other part of that conversation was the conversation we had with the DEP. With, again, because of the soils and the fact that at least, again, from what we've seen up here with the excavation we've done, is the fact that it's a good sandy soil that allows percolation through the soils relatively quickly. One of their main concerns was chlorides going through the soils and coming down. So that's why we were talking about, from the low-impact standpoint, concentrate more on the roofs, infiltrating that runoff from the roofs, if you will, 'cause that's relatively clean and obviously doesn't have the chlorides, than actually collecting the runoff on the parking areas because of the chlorides and correcting most of these ponds which will be...
Where are the ponds located again, real quick, Sean?
Here and here.
Here and there, okay. And have you also, did, I assume it's Jeff Dennis that you talked with at DEP?
That's correct, yes.
Did he talk to you too about equalization of those flows during really high storm events? And making sure that those flows get sort of attenuated over time instead of blasting the stream?
Obviously, he said that that was something he was gonna work with with Ben, okay? So obviously, what we do have is with the gravel bench associated with that, is obviously the stream protection volumes that we're talking about. So that is also something that Ben Viola does have, and I do know that him and Jeff will be looking at it.
I just wanna make sure that it's on the radar screen, because I know you're gonna be talking with staff tomorrow, kinda thing.
And I appreciate, 'cause again, obviously, the ponds, we have had that conversation. Obviously, Ben Viola, who is the review engineer for the DEP, knows that Jeff has been involved and we've had those conversations with him, so certainly, you know, whatever we have to do. And if I have to adjust that as ponds, I mean, obviously, we can play with those ponds. We have plenty of them.
Or just some type of outlet control, Sean.
Exactly.
Phillips Brook Crossing, can you talk to me about, are you gonna do a culvert? Are you looking at 1.5 bankful? What are you talking about for a stream crossing here?
Well, we did have a 42-inch culvert there originally as part of our original proposal, which was part of the approval. But again, I think I've heard it from Angela and we certainly heard it with the DEP as well. So I have talked to the applicant and we are designing a box culvert that will be installed in through there.
With a natural native substrate on the bottom?
The idea of it is that we actually have baffles within the bottom, obviously, that will have, okay?
Thank you.
Soil in it.
Thank you.
He actually did run down at his Park North Development.
It was your idea?
So actually, he has constructed one previously, and so that is part of the process we're going through in terms of finalizing that.
Thank you for being a good neighbor. I appreciate that. And so with that said, I'm not gonna dig too far into it either. I will comment that it makes it hard on us when there is a significant amount of comments like this. So, yeah, it's...
We look forward to the next one.
We do. And after you make all the agreements with staff, we look forward to having you come back, Sean.
And I appreciate that, Robin. It's like, you gotta start somewhere, you know? And unfortunately, that's where we were, 'cause we had a project that had been approved from all the way down, and basically it included Stewart Drive all the way up through Route 1.
I know.
All right, with the commercial lots, which were the blank canvases at that point in time. And of course, again, we're working with four-side in terms of, you know, here's the master plan, here's the site plan associated with this. Now we're trying to meld two projects together, if you will, and, you know, and the implications associated with that. So, you know, and I will say one thing about staff is, you know, they're certainly not bashful. I mean, they'll certainly be more than happy to tell me, you know, where I stand on these different things.
Good job, staff.
But, you know, at the same time, they're very open about meeting with us and going through these things too, which again, we will do tomorrow, and hopefully, I think that with that, that'll certainly, you know, allow us to successful these deals.
Thank you for that cooperative relationship, really. Thank you.
I'd like to second that, because I think that this is an example of what happens when you have an excellent staff and an applicant that knows what they're doing. It may not be an easy route, but we end up where we need to be. And we sit here looking at this stuff, which is pretty darn technical, but I trust the fact that the applicant knows what we want and the staff knows what we want, and it all comes out in the wash. It's a little overwhelming when you sit here and you get four inches of paperwork, but I don't get too upset, because these people know what they're doing. And I think this is the perfect example. So, thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
I will be quick and to the point. Is there anything the applicant or staff needs from me as to a direction or opinion in advance of tomorrow morning's meeting?
Good question. Good question. Good question.
I think, yeah, I think for staff's perspective, having been through multiple iterations and really looking at the conceptual plan, you know, I don't know that we're looking for any direct staff comments at this point. Just are things generally headed the way you anticipated them? And if there's anything huge that jumps out at you, let us know now. But again, there are a lot of things, so I'll speak for myself. Angela, I don't know if you have anything in particular you're looking?
No, I think after we meet and we go through some of these comments, like you said, I think next time will be a lot more beneficial when the planning board sees it and you'll be able to, you know, get into some of the details. Right now, it's kind of higher, just because we don't wanna get into every little nitpicky thing. And I think the staff can deal with that and give you something that you can actually comment on, I think, next time, working with the applicant.
Is there any way too to like, just so that we're not looking at a week before the next planning board meeting, you know, like that monster paperwork, is there any way that we could get minutes or like an update from the meeting or anything like that? Is there any way to like, sort of like, prime the pump so that we can help on our end and be a little more responsive as well? Or is that unheard of? I'm sorry. I'm new to this.
I mean, I won't speak for staff and Jay can jump in, but I would think that given that this meeting's happening tomorrow morning, that that would fall well within their regular timing parameters for including details for us as part of our packet, whether it's minutes or, you know, sort of a bullet point summary of kind of where they're ending up on things.
Well, and I will say, certainly what you'll see from us as part of this is we have, you know, we have their written comments, and we will certainly provide a written response to each and all of those comments as part of our presentation.
Right, there will be that.
Okay, so I hope that'll help, at least in terms of, and again, obviously, I'll be writing for DigiSweet tomorrow.
I'm happy to let them play in the sandbox tomorrow, and I eagerly wait and see what happens later.
Thank you. I'm pretty much on that wavelength as well. You know, I think we, when we start to get to the point where we feel like we're, like a workshop is breaking out and we're trying to work with the applicant to work through these things in real time, then that's not productive for anyone, particularly when you have that set up for the next morning, so we won't be redundant. I do appreciate some of the updates and, again, appreciate the public input. You know, among the things I'll look forward to is sort of where you're moving on buffering and addressing some of these grade differentials and sort of the visual impacts. We've talked about landscaping, buffering the Route 1 access. I'm glad to hear that you're sort of backing away from the, sort of the three-lane solution, if you will, stormwater, low-impact design. I might suggest, and folks may know where I'm going on this, that this could be another good opportunity for a sidewalk. On the one hand, it's a site that I think at one level we all feel very familiar with, 'cause we've been looking at this as a board in various forms for quite a while. We go by it all the time, but really hasn't been cleared out for that long and we're sort of entering that season where leaves are coming down and we should be able to get a sense of, again, given that we're not, we realize we're not looking at what the final product will be, but just to get the lay of the land, literally. I think we usually find that helpful, and especially when it comes to things like grade changes and view corridors and things like that. So as we typically do, I'll leave it to staff to sort of fill out the board on that in terms of availability and also neighbors and the applicant, of course. And I would be hopeful that coming out of that and then building on will hopefully be a productive session tomorrow morning that we'll all be in a better position to really dig into this and start moving toward more of an action. So. I think that's all I've got. You can come on up and ask just sure one question. Thanks.
On that sidewalk, you're gonna let us know, so?
We do typically, and Jay can speak to it at more of an official level, but typically, abutters are notified.
Good.
And there are certain protocols that we have to follow, 'cause it is a, we have enough of us together. It's sort of a, you know, almost a meeting, but we certainly will notify folks.
Yep. And I do just wanna make note that, so you folks probably received sort of official notification from the town about the meeting. We send those out at the first time, now that this item's being tabled tonight. You won't get another official notification, so just, again, we meet every three weeks. Our agendas are posted a week before the meeting, so you can either check online or call our office. But typically, we don't do another public formal letter notification, so I just wanna let folks know who are interested in following this project. That's now up to you to stay tuned.
And customarily, we do like to try to, when we do something like a sidewalk, we usually like to schedule it for a little bit before one of our Monday meetings, just to give you a sense, but, and that's usually included as part of the agenda when that goes out in that case, but just stay tuned on that.
Corey, I'd just like to thank the landowners for being here and for expressing sort of their concerns in a very constructive way. It was very constructive.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Do we have a town planners report?
Do not have anything to report on this evening?
Administrative amendment report.
Yep. One item to report on, 626 U.S. Route 1, which is commonly known as the Roya Chiropractic Site. Now Merrymaze is in there, it's just south of Dunston Corner. That's a mixed-use building. There's an office component and a residential component.
I was wondering about that.
So they're seeking, what they were requesting or have received administrative approval for is to add a garage to the residential side of things. Because it's a mixed-use building, it required site plan approval. And the chair and staff looked at it and felt that the addition itself was sort of de minimis in nature that it was of the kind to be considered administratively, so that was approved.
And that it was specific to the residential use?
Right. It wasn't, that was, yes, thank you. It wasn't, we made sure it wasn't part of the commercial activity, that wasn't increasing or expanding, so. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any planning board correspondence? Planning board comments? I have one comment. I will not be at the next meeting. It's, I believe, it's October 31st.
It is.
So. Accordingly?
I probably will not be at that meeting either.
Uh-oh. Uh-oh. You get down to that point.
That's four. Stay tuned.
Stay tuned.
Well, got some lead time.
Yep.
Anything else? Any other comments? With that, I'll move to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you.